I'm gonna call this evening's meeting of the Carson City Airport Authority to order. It is Wednesday, May 19th at 5:32 in the afternoon. And Danielle, if we could have a roll call, please, I'd appreciate it.
Chairperson Golden.
Here.
Vice Chair Harris. Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Hamilton.
Here.
Member Pulitz.
Present.
Member Hutter.
Here.
McCormas present.
Thank you. Can we get Steve Takeus on the phone? He should be trying to call in. Can they hear us back there?
Yes.
Okay. While we're doing that, Stan, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well. We'll move on to approving the minutes from the last airport board meetings, I believe, plural. Do we have those minutes in our board packet?
Yes, in the back.
In the back. Awesome. Okay, got it. So we have the Wednesday, April 21st meeting to approve. And I believe we have, do we have the May 1st, the May 5th meeting? Yes, we do. We have the May 5th meeting. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of both April 21st and May 5th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the April 21st and May 5th meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, those minutes are approved. So modification of the agenda. I do have the right to modify the agenda in an order to most effectively process the agenda items. I may be doing that this evening pending us getting counsel on the line. And before we go there, let me ask and see if there's any public comment. I will note for the record that I did check our email for public comment and received none this go around. So perhaps we can find out if there's anyone on the phone who wishes to comment for any agenda item or any non-agendized item for this evening.
We do have one caller on the line.
Can you put that caller through, please?
Caller, you are currently unmuted. Please state your name for the record.
Well, this may be, this is Chris Knox with Armstrong Consultants. I think it may be us, and we're just on the line for the engineer's update later on.
Okay, can you stand by, please?
Absolutely.
Has Counselor Takeus dialed in? No, is that yes?
There are no other callers on the line at this time.
Okay. I'm gonna presume then that Steve isn't gonna be able to join us unless we hear otherwise. We'll move into Agenda Item F1, this Public Leasing Section. This is to approve the ground lease for construction of new aircraft storage hangars east of Mountain View Community Hangars at the intersection of Taxiway Bravo and Charlie. It's APN number 005091-30. Since Counselor Takeus is not here, let me give some background on this and I'll carry this matter. The applicant Ortiz Brothers LLC happens to be one of our patrons and hangar tenants at our FBO. And we had been talking with them for some time and encouraging them to build hangars, which they actually are in the building business. They decided to proceed with this. This is the portion of land that Dennis G. and Greco had given back to the airport. Some of you may recall that a year or so ago. Dennis gave that land back to the airport. It is, has utilities on site. And we had an appraisal done. It came in at 30 cents a foot. So this meets our goal of leasing available land on the airport to increase the utilization of the airport, number of aircraft hanged at the airport, and increase and bolster our annual revenues. There is a positive fiscal impact of approximately $19,000 per annum. The applicable statute on this is Carson City Municipal Code Title 19. The lease has gone through our legal counsel, the applicant's legal counsel, the lessee's counsel, that is, and through the Board of Supervisors District Attorney's Office. So the municipality of Carson City has approved it pending a vote by the Board of Supervisors. So we have the document here, ready for execution by both myself and Treasurer Rogers. The lessee has already signed it. I can answer any other questions anyone may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Two questions and maybe not specifically pertinent to this case, but, you know, hopefully this as an example of something we're gonna be doing a lot more often in the foreseeable future. You just did a nice job of summarizing all of the parties who have reviewed, commented, and approved this. I was just kind of making the note that perhaps there is a legally acceptable way in the future where if we have a pro forma lease, that that can be bought off by the Attorney General, the District Attorney, the mayor, the, you know, and so forth and so on, the soups. And then we can just have a review of the salient terms or the variables. So I think that that's something that might be nice to shoot for if it can be made to work. My specific question that did catch my eye was the mark-to-market land appraisal at year 15 and then every 10 years thereafter. Is that, is that a modern concept in Carson City Airport leases, or is that something that has been around for a long, long while?
Okay, let me answer both questions for you. We are there at that point, in my opinion, where we have a form lease. That's been one of our objectives and I've pushed for that and we're, we're kind of there. I would say that the only reason we weren't there on this is that the applicant, the lessee, had requested some revisions to it. If the lessee requests revisions, then, you know, we go with it. The amount of time that we spent running this past the DA with some minor revisions was minimal. I would say confidently, after this exercise, we're, we're there. So the, yeah, the mark-to-market concept honestly was foreign to me. I'm not sure how we got there. I was hoping Steve Takeus could embellish that a little bit, but now it's, it's not something that we do. How's that? Haven't done it in the past.
So in that sense, this is a, a new concept for airport leases.
Yep.
You know, and the thing that caught my eye on this, and thanks for confirming that, is being something a little different and not sure who proposed it. It's obviously great for the, for the airport, you know, and has some, some prudence. I was just curious as to what the kind of, I don't know, the, you know, the, the example we followed on that might have been or the precedent, there's the word I'm looking for. The thing I guess that could happen as a lessee is a, if there should be some rapid appreciation in land values, a little shock to the system somewhere, you know, I mean, I don't see that happening, but that is an interesting variable to be introducing into, into these leases. But if you're gonna have a 50-year lease, then perhaps that becomes appropriate. So interesting, just calling attention to that.
Yeah, Carl, perhaps we can speak offline about that after the meeting. Any other comments or questions from members of the Airport Authority? And Carl, thanks for your inquiries on that. John? Does meet your, you know, does meet muster with you?
I'm prepared to vote on it.
Okay. Tim, I think you're up to speed with me on this.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Stan? Any comments or questions or clarification?
I don't like 50-year leases very much, but I guess that's standard in airports.
Yeah, the, the issue there is, so that you're aware, I think that's a good thing for you to bring up. Anywhere from 30 to 50 is pretty damn standard. And the reason why is the tenant, if you will, it's a land lease, ground lease. The tenant has to invest 100% of their money into building whatever they're building. In this case, it's hangars. In order to let them get a return on their investment and amortize the improvements, they have to have a lengthy lease term. There's just no way around it. And part of this goes back to FAA rules. The FAA will not permit you to own the property. So they own the structure, the airport owns the land. From an amortization standpoint, it doesn't pencil on like a 10-year lease. It just, there's no financial way to do it. It just doesn't work. So it, if, if we want investment in the airport, and this is common at all airports, yeah, I'm just saying, it's, you're looking at anywhere from 30 to 50 years. Paul?
I see in here that it is for T-hangers. We haven't, we don't really have a layout of what the hangars are gonna be. Is that, that's gonna be another approval?
That's, that is correct. They have to come back to us with some sort of plan. And T could end up being box. You know, if we look at what Mr. G. and Greco did with his hangars, they ended up being box hangars.
Yeah.
They're just basic boxes. Nice, but just a square, basically, for each hanger.
And if I understand it correctly, he, once, once we go over this, he's got a year to do the plans and then another year to construct.
As I understand, that's correct. He has some time for due diligence.
Yep.
So.
One, one other quick question. In the definitions, because I don't see definitions baked into the lease, but when we say dry aircraft storage, what is the term of art there? What is dry aircraft storage? You know, in our world, we think of dry and wet, and you'd say, does that mean the aircraft have to be defueled? What, what, what does that mean?
You know, Carl, I'm at a loss on that. Anybody here, Tim, can you embellish on it?
From what I understand, dry means it's storage, it's a storage hanger, no, not, like it's not at a Class II FBO or something where there's another type of a business. Strictly, it's a storage hanger is what it's designed to be.
So it's not maintenance?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Excuse me, Chair Golden. I just wanted to let you know that, that Steve is listening. He wasn't able to get on with the number that he had. I gave him the number to call in, so he should be on now. He says that he is listening and he's asking if he can speak from this connection. So I'm assuming that he can only speak when he's off mute.
Okay. How do we off mute him?
The back people can do that.
Okay, why don't we off mute Steve, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so dry hanger simply means you can't, you can't use it as a fueling base. That's, that's the only limitation there. And the other piece that I'd like to respond to is the term of the lease needs to be 50 years for an investor to amortize their investment. And so although some airports have experimented with shorter-term leases, good examples are like Stead where you, you know, you've got tenants there that don't put any money into their property because they don't have a long enough time to amortize the lease. And so, and if there were any questions before that, I was still trying to connect.
I think, I think we covered pretty much everything. The only other question that came up, Steve, I'm gonna speak with Carl about after the meeting, it was why this lease has a mark-to-market provision at certain steps in the term.
Okay, the reason it was included is when we did the lease extensions, which we were able to do for other storage hangars, the city insisted that there be a recalibration or resetting of the lease rate, at least on a 10-year period. And so when our former airport manager was initially negotiating, I guess if you will, the terms of the lease with Mr. Ortiz, he included that term. So there, there you have it. That's why it's in there.
Okay. All right. Good deal. So on that matter, I think we've closed discussion on that. There's a proposed motion on your board memo, if anyone would like to make a motion to approve that ground lease.
I saw a move to approve the lease presented to us for the Ortiz project in the Carson City Airport.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the ground lease as submitted between Carson City Airport and Ortiz Brothers Aviation LLC. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Paul has seconded it. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and the lease gets approved. Now, Steve, are you still on the line?
I am on the line. I've, I've only got about 10 or 15 more minutes and I'll have a signal.
Okay, I am going to exercise my right to modify the agenda at this time because it's important that you participate in this. So we're going to move item number three to item number two and hear it next, and then we'll discuss the budget after your offline, Steve. So we're moving on to item number three on the agenda, which is discussing the merits, objectives, and goals of a long-term cooperative agreement between the airport and Carson City. This is on the agenda. Treasurer Rogers had requested that we have a discussion about this matter, and I think that's a prudent thing to do at this juncture. We entered into a interim agreement with Carson City for a period of six months, and we need to identify any objectives and goals that need to be incorporated into a long-term agreement. So Steve, can you give us a little brief history on this and where we want to head?
Sure. In 1989, when the Airport Authority was formed, the law that created the Airport Authority really had the Airport Authority standing as a freestanding subdivision of the state of Nevada, in which the land was actually transferred to the Airport Authority. The Solicitor General at the time, who was the advisor to the FAA, opined that because any property taxes had to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, that only the board, the city, through the Board of Supervisors, could be a grant recipient of federal FAA grants. As a result, the decision at that time was to enter into a cooperative agreement where the city would continue to own the land and qualify as the grant sponsor because it has the taxing authority. The city would get the grants, but then turn the money over to the airport. And the cooperative agreement at the time essentially said, the Airport Authority does everything in terms of running, they have all the obligations of running the airport, managing it, everything else. And the city's role, at least from the standpoint of FAA grants, was to be the grant sponsor. That agreement ran out in 2020, May 17th, I believe, 2020. We extended it for a year. Our former airport manager indicated that he was negotiating new terms. However, that information was never shared with me, so I don't really know what terms are being negotiated. After he departed, I contacted the mayor, who assured me that a draft would be turned right around to us. We received the draft, actually too late to act on it last month. And so we had a special meeting last month to give ourselves six months to negotiate it. The instructions to the DA's office were essentially, pull out the stuff that's now no longer makes any sense, you know, stuff about which equipment to transfer, what accounts to transfer, and create a new agreement. And so the DA created a new agreement. What I've given you is my red line and comment version of that agreement, where I've gone through and made modifications to the agreement so that they're compatible with the current version of the NRS, which is 844. Several changes have been made in the interim over the last 30 years. So that's where it stands right now. The input that would be helpful to me is what should the term of the new agreement be? And what other things are important to you? I would note that one authority member contacted me and said, hey, shouldn't we have something in here about the property tax revenues that come to us and the fuel tax revenues that come to us? And in fact, I did include a provision. It's a small paragraph H, and I can't remember which page it's on because I don't have the physical document in front of me, where I reference it. Although I could probably do a better job by actually referencing the actual written agreements that were approved by the city and the airport previously on that. There is, there, another question was raised, which is, oh, well, can't the airport just be its own sponsor for the grant? Mike Williams at the FAA has given us some, at least initial feedback, saying, yeah, I, you know, you probably can because we've treated Reno that way and they don't have taxing authority, only Washoe County can tax. We could probably start going in that direction. I had recommended to our last airport manager, don't try and do it in one fell swoop. Try and take baby steps on this thing because we want to make sure we do it right and we don't somehow screw it up so that we're not eligible for federal funding for some period of time. And so there's still, there's nothing in this agreement which would prohibit us from being like joint sponsors of the grant along with the city. And to me, that's a logical step that you should consider if we're gonna try and migrate in the direction of having the airport be the direct grant sponsor. Beyond that, the other things that were sought by the former airport manager were to take over complete control of the leases without the city having any approval. To do that, you have to change NRS 844, and you have to do that in a legislative session where you have enough lead time to do it. When that issue was brought up to the chairman and myself, we both pointed out, it's too late, the legislature session's already started. There are no bill draft requests left, and getting a bill like that in after the session started is probably near impossible. And so if there were some kind of decision by the authority to do something or move in that direction, that decision should be made sometime before the next legislative session. And there's nothing in this cooperative agreement that would restrict us from doing that. And so that's the main description of what we have in front of you. And any input you can give me to assist me in working with the DA would be helpful to me.
Okay. Being that you're only with us for a few minutes here, I'm gonna ask everybody to make a brief comment before you have to cut loose, Steve. You said you need to cut loose at 6:00 PM, correct?
Yeah, 6:05 at the latest.
Okay, that gives us five to 10 minutes. So I'll start with Carl. Carl, is there anything you want to ask of Steve or comment to Steve?
Steve, thank you for your, thank you for your follow-up comment on the question about revenue. I'll admit that I have not been looking at the red line version, so I look forward to doing that. I really, I, I think that the interim steps that Steve mentions are prudent ones to see if we can move toward further autonomy. He mentioned NRS 844 is needing to be modified if we were going to take over full review authority on leases. I guess a quick follow-up question. Is there a mechanism through which we could become full independent sponsors? Would that require us to have control over the revenue, if that's even possible? Or was the Washoe County example, the Stead example you used, one where they did end up being sole sponsors versus co-sponsors without the taxing authority?
Yes, Washoe County was able to become the sole sponsor of the grant, and they do not have taxing authority. And that was a good find by our former airport manager because until, till we heard that, we were still relying on the advice that had come to us from the Solicitor General in 1989. So apparently there's been some movement at the FAA to get off of that, that, that barrier. But, you know, we could still go forward with it with this cooperative agreement. I don't think there's anything we need to do in the cooperative agreement to change that, other than if there are things in the future we want to change in the cooperative agreement, we would just go forward. One thing we want to avoid, though, is not having a cooperative agreement. There's, it starts a cascade of events that may not be very controllable. I mean, what would happen is, in short and simple terms, if there were no cooperative agreement, we would probably, under the law, require the city to transfer us the land, but we would lose our FAA funding. And that's not a good result for anybody.
John?
Thanks for the summary, Steve, of where we are. I couldn't agree more. I have a couple of comments. All I want is I want to be able to lease land in the most efficient way possible. And so any changes that we make to the cooperative agreement, that's all I care about. I really don't care about whether we become a I really don't care about whether we become a direct grant sponsor or not for the FAA. So, but my thoughts are, Steve, is, one, I'd like to own the land. I would like to have the land be on our balance sheet. I think it makes us much stronger as an airport authority and it also gives us an asset that we can do what we will with going forward. So, I'd like that part of NRS 844 to become real. And then, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, I think it's well within our purview based on what I read in NRS 844, says that Carson City has to approve any leases or any transfers of the land or leases that we put on the land. I'm thinking in the cooperative agreement, couldn't we come up with a paragraph in that agreement where the city gives us authority to write leases, sign leases on strictly our say-so as long as they meet a certain set of criteria? In other words, I'll call it a blanket lease approval. And couldn't that be what allows us to comply with 844 without having to change 844? Because I think all that the city cares about is that we don't do something crazy out there, that we don't put a non-aeronautical activity on the airport. So, I think it's very possible for us to give ourselves some more autonomy inside of the bounds of 844 by having, in the cooperative agreement, a bounded, you know, blanket authorization for us to write leases onto that property. So, that's, so that, I wanted to make that suggestion and I'd like to see that pursued. And then, so those are my two comments. Let's strengthen, if, you know, and so maybe I'll back up just one touch and make another comment. The NRS 844 envisioned an airport authority, as you described, that was a lot more autonomous than we actually are. Right now, the only interaction we have with the city that I can detect is they basically review the leases that we negotiate and we write. And I don't have any indication that they've ever disapproved of any of our lease decisions going forward. And then, and then they also, in NRS 844, were supposed to provide us with services that we would pay for, that would support in the operations of the airport. And I don't think we're doing any of that. I think there's, I think we aren't asking them for any services. So, I think, and then, and then we also have an indication now from the FAA saying that we can be our own grant sponsor. So, I can't think of any reason why we shouldn't fulfill the actual full intent of NRS 844 in the form of the cooperative agreement going forward. So, and then, the reason why I think that that change might be appropriate is that our current cooperative agreement that's been in place for thirty years has resulted in the airport that we own and operate today. And the airport that we own and operate today has some weaknesses. One is, it doesn't present itself well to College Parkway. We have, we're antiquated in how we look to the community. And the second one is, I don't think we've been particularly successful at accomplishing leases. And so, I would be very loath to sign another thirty-year agreement that maintains the status quo when I think the status quo has some weaknesses. So, all I want is, I want us to be conscious about that. And before we decide a thirty lease going forward, let's incorporate the current reality of the airport authority, which is much stronger than it was in 1990, and give us the maximum autonomy that we can, that we can possibly accomplish. So, I've given a couple of suggestions on how I think that can be accomplished. And I'm, but what I really want is, I want this authority to form a work group and make decisions in coordination with the city about what do we want for the level of autonomy for the airport authority going forward? And how can we make it so that we can accomplish leases as simply, easily, make it as easy as possible for potential lessees to accomplish a lease and use our land?
Thank you. Steve, I know you're running out of time. Tim, do you have any questions? Comments?
No, I just want to support John's investigation. I think we should investigate his suggestions and see how this works with the city and see how it works with the airport authority and hopefully, we can make something to be a win-win.
Okay. Stan? Paul?
Yeah, I would like to also talk about the, briefly, the leases and specifically leases renewals. Okay, what's happening is, we're getting to the end of our lease renewals. They go out to bid and I think we need a little bit more authority ourselves as a board to decide what these leases are going to be, rather than just bidding them out. And I think that can also be in this cooperative agreement. And I've got a number of examples. I'm not going to go over those right now.
Steve, do you have any other input that you want to provide us with before you cut loose?
No, those are all good ideas. I'm going to have to do some research on those to see where a change in the state law would be required versus something we can do in the cooperative agreement without changing the state law. But yeah, no, I don't have anything further. I really appreciate the input, though.
Okay, thank you so much for your time tonight. Go do what you need to do and we'll continue the discussion.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, hey, thank you very much. Sorry I can't be here for the whole meeting, guys.
That's okay.
Doesn't happen often, but...
Thank you.
All right, yeah.
I have one comment about this. I don't need Steve on the line. I have just a, unfortunately or fortunately, I've had a lot of experience with commercial leases in my lifetime. And I got to say, I'm just playing the other side of the card, if you will. The process to enter into a lease at this airport is really, really simple and it's extremely expeditious. And Carson City, to my knowledge, as a municipality, has never dragged out the process or turned down a lease agreement or a lease extension or a lease modification. Heck, I've been involved in like four or five on the airport. And I'm, you know, hearing that there has to be a way to make it more efficient, more expeditious. I must say, it's about as efficient as any process I've ever seen. I'm not sure how much more efficient we could make it. You know, as Carl brought up with the Ortiz Brothers lease, we have basically a form lease. The DA's comments were minimal. We, you know, we approved it tonight. It goes to the Board of Supervisors here at their next meeting. I would anticipate, Stan could tell me I'm wrong, but I'd anticipate it'll get approved without any discussion. Yeah, I mean, it's a very efficient process. I'm not sure what we could do to make it more efficient. I'm just putting it out there, playing devil's advocate. So, my experience with the airport authority as a tenant has always been a good one. And my experience with Carson City as a municipality has always been positive in the process. So, just food for thought, nothing more, nothing less. Any other comments anyone would like to share on this particular matter?
Well, I think maybe just to kind of amplify some of these thoughts. I mean, where I'm most interested and I would suggest, just for the record, indeed, this is a very, very important piece of business. The last thing we would want to do is to lose the opportunity to craft something modern, something that's mutually beneficial and acceptable to the authority and the airport and to Carson City and not just sort of, you know, move it along. Even though I will note that the renewal agreement is phrased as a five-year term with subsequent one-year terms auto-renewing. So, it's not a thirty-year agreement again. But, you know, there's good work to be done. And with the agreement to allow another six-month extension, I think we need to make this a priority. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, we're getting right into it tonight. To me, I'm very interested, as others have said, in looking at what are the options that would cause the property to actually convey to the authority? Right? Because I think it does allow us, whether it's, you know, more nuanced than anything, allows us to present, I think, a more, you know, meaningful and tangible entity, you know, that has its own property. And whether or not the, you know, I take the chairman's comment and agree with it that, you know, we're not seeing a burdensome process from Carson City in actually doing the business of the leasing, you know, the things that have complicated that have kind of been other things, not the city. I think they've been a good partner in this. So, it's less about that, but perhaps more about just how we backstop sort of the independence and the, you know, wherewithal of the airport authority to manage its affairs. And I think owning its property is a meaningful piece of that. Similarly, I don't think that being, having Carson City be the sponsor in our FAA process has caused us any problems. We've been able to make great things happen with the FAA. It's not about, but I think it's another example of a place where, again, the independence, not to make a statement, but in a certain way, almost to take something off of Carson City's plate. You know, it's sort of, how can we, you know, put ourselves in a position to do the work that makes sense and, you know, let them be a good partner in the most aligned way? Final thing I just wanted to say, though, is that, you know, we have only just begun to touch on it. I will review council's red line. I want to learn a lot more about how the revenue share is encoded, when that gets revisited, whether we're actually satisfied with that revenue share, whether it's doing what we need to do, need it to do to help us continue to develop the mission of the airport. So, I think that that revenue portion, where it's described, how it's decided, when it's reviewed, is something I'd like to learn a lot more about.
Thank you, Carl. John?
Regarding the revenue, I, you know, just so, just so you know, Carl, I mean, once a year, Carson City does send us a complete list of all of the property that's owned on the airport, I mean, that is registered to the airport or assigned to the airport and in terms of all of the airplanes, all of the buildings. And then, they identify how much property tax those items of property generate and then they remit that to us. And then, we amortize that over the course of our fiscal year. And that generally happens, I think, the accounting happens in February or March timeframe. The money happens August or September timeframe of each year, or maybe even in July at the beginning of our fiscal year. But what I don't know is exactly how they calculate those tax revenues. And I think that'd be well worth, well worth understanding. And so, I'm not, I'm not, but back to the overall agreement, just for reference for this group, you know, when NRS, in my reading of NRS 844, what their intention was that we would fund our operations through a property tax on all of the property in Carson City. They gave us the authority to do that, to identify how much property tax money we needed in order to fulfill what we wanted to fulfill relative to the airport. And of course, that's never been done. And that has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, any request that we make. So, we never did, we've never done that, that I am aware of. And so, now, so then, we were left generating revenue in a variety of other ways, which we're all aware of. So, I'm not really, I'm not really advocating for making changes just for the sake of making changes. What I want is, I want the airport to have the maximum leeway to fulfill our mission, to fulfill our strategic objectives. That's it. If there's nothing to be gained by us having the ability to write our own leases in terms of doing more leasing or improving our, the way we present to College Parkway, you know, to the city, then I don't, then I'm not proposing that we make changes. But I have a, I have a hope that with a little bit more authority and with a stronger balance sheet, we may be able to do a better job of marketing our property. We may be able to do a better job of attracting public-private partnership money to go and do something on College Parkway so that, so that we can get it, so that we can present to the community the way I'd like it to see us present to the community, the way I hope other members of the board see that. So, that's all I'm looking for, is I'm looking for to take an opportunity after thirty years of one way of operation to, you know, to decide whether there's benefit, whether there's benefit out there. And I understand completely what Chairman Golden is saying. He is not identifying a strong case for making changes. He doesn't feel that there's a strong case for making changes. And I think his opinion is valid, but I'd like to see it considered a little bit more broadly and thoroughly before we decide as a body.
And John, I'm just playing devil's advocate, that's all. That's nothing more, nothing less, just like you and I talked about on the phone. I'm somewhat ambivalent on this and I'm going to make a suggestion when we're all done opining on this matter. Tim, do you have any further comment on it?
No more comments.
Stan, do you want to weigh in on this? You got any?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
What is the real benefit if you own the own land versus what you have now, John? That's my first question.
From my perspective, if we own that land, it'll be our one and only asset that we have. We'll have, we'll have a balance sheet that has assets. And so, at some point in the future, under the right circumstances, maybe we can leverage that asset into getting money we need, getting money that we want to do something that we want to do on the property.
Is it hindering us now by not owning the land?
Not that I know of because we haven't really gone, not because we haven't really gone out and done anything expensive that wasn't funded by the FAA. We haven't gone, you know, for example, we haven't, you know, made a play or made an attempt to, you know, upgrade or replace our airport terminal building. That's the, and we haven't yet chosen to try to buy land around the airport to bring more land inside the airport that we could lease or to protect us from incursions from the outside. But if we were to ever want to do one of those two things, to buy land or to spend some significant money on the airport building, I'm thinking that we, it might be to our benefit to have some assets when we go out and try to finance that.
And when you refer to College Parkway, what are you talking about?
The main entrance to the airport is off of College Parkway. And yet, when you, and yet, when you drive down College Parkway, there's no signage or limited signage saying that there's an airport in existence there. And the first thing that a person sees when they enter the airport property is a 1940s era terminal building. And I don't like that.
Well, don't we have money we can spend for that?
The last time, no.
That's a simple answer. And let me, let me interrupt for one minute. I don't want you to lose your train of thought. John, your comment about acquiring land adjacent to the airport, that is more often than not grant-eligible FAA. That doesn't mean they're going to provide the grant, but that's the way that, that's the way that process works.
But for exactly that reason, eligible but not necessarily priority, might be a priority for us.
Right.
And the ability to leverage, you know, asset-backed lending using some of our other land to be able to prioritize that could be.
Anyhow, I don't want to interrupt Stan.
But don't we have money to improve, Jesus put aside a lease?
Yeah, right, yeah, right now, we are, we do have a fairly strong balance sheet. We have, you know, somewhere around a million foreign cash in the bank. We haven't chosen to, but I think that when you talk about land purchases, I don't know if that's going to go particularly far. When you talk about doing significant upgrades to the airport terminal, yeah, that could go, that could go a long way, although the last time that we had any kind of significant discussion about, you know, about upgrading or replacing the terminal building, the number, the $3 million number got thrown around.
Well, yeah, and maybe if we're talking apples and oranges, I'm talking about just College Parkway. We have money to spend signs and improve the appearance of the runway.
Absolutely, and we do have a capital improvement plan that we authorize, that we talk about and authorize every year, that we spend money on various capital projects, spend our money.
Right.
On various capital projects every year. And one of those capital projects is to do some work on the landscaping and the hardscaping, the driveways and stuff like that in front of the, in front of the airport.
Okay, thank you. Stan, thank you for your opinion and comments. Appreciate it. Paul?
Yeah, I guess just, just in general, I like the idea of being, of us running more like a small business rather than a larger bureaucracy, just as a general. So, I support a lot of the idea about taking over our own, our own land. So I support a lot of the idea about taking over our, our own, our own land, and, and I think, as John says, we need to look at all the pluses and minuses of that, because I don't think right now we really know, you know, much, much about that. But a more, a more immediate, as I, as I, as I mentioned here, is that it seems like the, the lease renewals coming up, we're, we're, we're getting to the end of a number of lease renewals, and I guess what happens right now is those have to go out to bid. Okay. As, as far as I understand it, and, and that may not be the best decision and the best way to go for some of these lease renewals. And so I would be in favor of trying to get more of our authority to, to decide what might be best for the airport on some of these lease renewals. When it goes out to bid, if we have, and I will give an example, like, today, we get an airplane go off the runway, okay? And one of our FBO guys runs, runs, runs out there, gets that thing, gets that airplane off the runway in less than an hour. Okay? So, and, and that's a huge asset. I think we had, I don't know, Tim, Tim was trying to get, people are asking, you know, when is it going to be ready so we can get our jets going, when, when can we get our commerce going? And if he is somewhat outbid, if, if, if he bids, you know, 30 cents a square foot and, and someone else bids 31 cents a square foot for a hamburger stand, now all of a sudden, us as an airport, we have less services to, to keep our airport running. And so as time goes on, and I would soon like to perhaps change that in a way that we would have more ability to negotiate a new lease rather than just bid it out. And I don't know if we can do that in our cooperative agreement. I was kind of told no, but those are, those are my thoughts as far as an immediate need.
Paul? I share your concern, and it is unfortunate that Counselor Takis had to leave us today, because I'm going to state something, we're going to have to verify it with him. My recollection on that matter is, nothing in a cooperative agreement can solve that problem. That is a statutory problem with the Nevada Revised Statute.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. Again, I could be wrong on that. I would want a confirmation, but I, if my memory serves correctly, that is not a cooperative agreement issue, it's a NRS issue, where we're required, and it's only for commercial tenants, it's not for dry hangar storage. But, and it's limited, that's the other thing, it's limited to like a five-year renewal, as I recall also. So you can get a five-year renewal at the present day rate, but that's it.
Michael, I wanted to, I want to opine on that. I've read, I spent some time in preparation for this meeting, reading NRS 844, and it is very limited of the requirements that they have in there, that, about our relationship with the city. I don't believe that the NRS 844 has any requirement like you described. If that does exist, it would be in Title 19 in the cooperative agreement.
It, it may be in a different statute. Yeah, because there is, there is a statutory requirement that I am aware of for certain, that when you do a lease like we just did with Ortiz, we don't have to go to bid, but if we do a lease for a commercial operation, it does go to a bid process.
And, and I would say that that is main, is not codified directly in 844, but it may be part of the city's requirements. And so, and so there, and so there, so you're sort of bringing up an item that, that we ought to be able to address in a, in a cooperative agreement.
It may be in a different statute.
Okay, okay, very good, okay.
That's what I was getting at, it may not be in NRS 844. Again, it's unfortunate that our counsel is not on the line to actually verify what I'm telling you, but I do know factually that the commercial, the land, if you don't have that ability for commercial operation, that has to go to a bid process, and that is mandatory.
I think when, wherever it is encoded or ensconced, it's important that we understand it and understand where, at the time of this cooperative agreement review, we do have latitude to spell things out in a certain way, because we obviously would like to be as advantaged as possible in our ability to not just go to what, in my world of federal government contracting, is called lowest-cost technically acceptable. You know, one penny more does not necessarily make that the best and highest purpose for the use of that parcel of land. So I think that this brings up, I guess, an adjacent subject, but one that's super important, and I think is the right time for us to be getting smart on it.
Couldn't, couldn't agree with you more. Let me make a suggestion here. A couple people here have been very well-versed, educated, and vocal on the matter, and I've had discussions with them over the course of some time. And John, you had suggested that we form a subcommittee to get our arms around this matter. Might I recommend, because we're not taking any action on this matter tonight, this is only for discussion purposes, let me make that clear. Might I recommend, and I don't want to appoint anyone, but I'm going to suggest that John, yourself, and Carl, yourself, be our representatives of the Airport Authority to really further pursue this matter with Airport Council, get to the bottom of it, and the two of you convene with Counselor Takis at your first available opportunity, and sit down with him, and, and really come back to us and say, hey, here's what I think we should do. And I, I think everybody here would probably follow your lead. Are you, you're okay with that, Carl? John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do the work, but, and, you know, in the spirit of not violating any open meeting laws, we have room for one more member if there's somebody who's really interested in. I'm thinking, Michael, you might want to be a party of this.
I'd happily do so.
Yeah, because, because I think that, because I, I know that you have.
I don't like appointing myself to anything.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I think you would be a valuable addition to that, to that mix.
Happily, happily. Okay, so the three of us, the three of us will convene with Steve, maybe at his office, maybe at my office or your office, Carl. We'll, we'll get together with him when he has some time, sit down and kind of hammer through what we can and can't do, and what works and doesn't work, and report back to the Airport Authority. And then, and then what we'll do is, after we outline our objectives and goals, perhaps we need to sit down with members of the Board of Supervisors and work with them.
All sounds good to me, and I'm just glad that we're moving this so far down the field tonight, because when your work on a one-month cadence, six months of extension will go by fast.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so.
So who's going to take the lead on making the arrangements with Steve, with the three of us?
I'll do so.
Okay, perfect, great.
Happily.
Great.
You know, he's out of town for a while, and I will get with him when he returns and tell him that we want to sit down with him for an hour or so, or go to dinner or something, where we can hash this out.
And I, you know, I just want to state, you know, that the, and, and 844 is a reasonable read, not hard, not hard to read. The, the Title 19 is a little bit more daunting, but, but there's probably two-thirds of it that's related to through-defense access, and that's not really something that we're looking to change. So I think that, I think that it's not as complicated as one might think.
No, and that's important homework that we should all have before that meeting, have done, get up to speed on it.
So we took one item out of order. We're going to move on to our adoption of our final budget. This is the public hearing of the fiscal year final budget. A tentative budget was filed with the Nevada Department of Taxation, and it was discussed and modified at a prior Airport Authority meeting. So a, a final approved budget is required to be submitted to the Department of Taxation no later than June 1st. So time is of the essence. John, take it away.
As a friendly reminder to the group, in February, we presented our first, our first look at the budget. The authority members had, had input. We modify, we incorporated their input, and we presented a preliminary budget in March. It was approved, was submitted to the city, I mean, to the state, the state approved it. And so all that's left is for us to get one last look at it, decide whether or not any changes need to be made. The budget in the pad, packet is identical to the one that was approved by us in March, and I've gotten no input from anybody on this authority or from, in, in the general public that asking for any changes. So that's why I have brought an identical budget to this group for its consideration and a final approval or a request for modifications. We are certainly allowed to do modifications if we think it's appropriate prior to submitting the, the final budget to the state.
John, I just had a quick question about the contents of the actual package. Where am I looking for that budget in the package? I see fiscal 2021 P and L and balance sheet.
It's a little earlier in the packet, it's like right in the middle, Carl. There's a, there's a big Hunkin spreadsheet with the last two years' worth of budget data and, and actual data.
Oh, there we go.
Yep. And so that, and so that, that's, that's the, the way that we presented the budget to the, to the authority. Just as a point of reference, this is not what goes to the state, this gets condensed down into a standard form with just a few line item entries before it goes to state.
Thank you, I just couldn't find it in the packet tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Paul, you have any comments or questions about the budget to be submitted? How about you, Stan? Tim?
Um.
John, I trust you don't have anything to add to this conversation. I, I have one minor thing to add. Thank you for all your efforts on this. Appreciate it. That's, I, I think the treasurer probably does more work around here than any other member of the Airport Authority, and we appreciate it.
Tim might disagree with you at this point in time.
Well, right now, at this point in time, Tim should disagree with me. Normally, exactly, normally. Well, with that in mind, I think now would be the time to, you know, make a motion to approve this budget as final and accept it and submit it to the Board of Taxation.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the 2020-21 budget as submitted.
Very well, we have a motion, do we have a second? Is that you, Paul? Oh, Stan?
Just one note, that's the 21-22.
That's correct.
Oh, good job, yes, 21-22, I have it.
We have a little typo.
Typo.
That's okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 21-22 budget as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the Airport Engineers Report. I know our airport engineer has been waiting way too patiently.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We won't take much time tonight. We did have quite a bit transpire over the last month. We received bids for the AWOS relocation project, received two, two competitive bids, very close. Unfortunately, the low bid had to be deemed non-responsive, so we went to the next bidder, but it, the pricing was so, so close that it's really a minor impact. We have submitted revised grant applications based on the bid for that project and are proceeding forward that that grant has been announced with the FAA. I don't think we've seen that agreement come down yet, but it's probably forthcoming in the next few weeks. Snow removal equipment is in a similar state. We locked in pricing for the snow removal equipment, submitted the revised grant application, and should have a grant forthcoming on that, at which point we'll start getting that equipment on order. We also finalized the scope of work for the aeronautical survey and preliminary study for the nighttime approach procedures. This is kind of part two. The airport funded a feasibility study in previous, prior years that found that it was feasible to get the nighttime approach reinstated. The first step to that is to conduct a aeronautical survey of the airport's surrounding environment, so that's what this scope of work does. We locked in that scope of work, had the independent fee estimate completed, and revised grant application was submitted on that as well. And so as soon as that grant's received, we can proceed on the path of getting that done. Circling back to the snow removal equipment building, we had three very interested bidders on that project up until the 11th hour, at which point the market scared all three away, basically, for various reasons. So we did not receive any bids on that project this year. In talking to those bidders, it's probably not a bad thing that we did not, because the prices we would have received very likely would have exceeded our budget and potentially could have scared the FAA away from that project. So sort of a mixed blessing, obviously, we would have rather proceeded with that, that project, but it doesn't impact any future project. The FAA allowed us to proceed with purchasing the equipment in the anticipation that we will rebid that project next year, hopefully in more favorable market conditions, and get a project that we can afford. It does give us a little bit of time to continue working to get through the city's special use permit process, so we will work on that over the summer and get that all locked in so that when we're bid-ready again next fall or winter, we'll, we'll already have that taken care of. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about, which is probably the most impactful to the group and other airport users, is our runway pavement maintenance project. Originally, we had put a date on the calendar of July, or excuse me, June 1st to complete that, the, the majority of the remaining work on that project. We're in conversations with the contractor this week, actually, those conversations are still happening, but it appears that they will be arriving at the airport on June 2nd. June 1st is the first day after Memorial Day, so they've requested basically a one-day bye, and I don't foresee any issues with that. They will arrive on-site June 2nd. There's some preparatory test sections they need to apply, we're going to probably apply those to the paved overrun, which will have minimal impact to the airport while we do those test sections. And then as soon as they have passing results, which will likely be 12 hours later, we will do a full closure of the runway and apply the fog sealing and the first coat of marking so that we can reopen the runway. The runway should be reopened at some point on the 4th is when they'll reopen. We're still working on a detailed schedule, which we'll share with Tim and disseminate that information once we have an actual sequence. We're, basically, right now, we're working off of just a conversation we've had, a couple conversations we have with contractors. But as soon as we have detailed time and stuff like that, we will work, share that through Tim and disseminate that information accordingly. But there will be a closure of the runway on, potentially an hour or two on the 2nd, and more likely, the entire day of the 3rd will be, the 24-hour period on the 3rd, potentially spilling into the 4th, depending on when they actually shut the runway down. So we will have, we will have a shut runway for 24 hours or so. So if that materializes, we'll certainly show that information, and we'll let you know if that changes at all. Otherwise, everything's in good shape. There's no funding issues with any of our FY21 projects, other than obviously we didn't get bids on the building, but I think we'll be get, we'll, we'll better use taxpayer money next year if we rebid that, hopefully in a more stable bidding environment. Certainly entertain any questions or comments or concerns anyone has about any of these items or any other engineering-related items.
Yes, John.
Chris, this is John Rogers. How will you decide when to put the snow removal equipment building out for bid again?
That is a very good question, sir. We've, we've actually, this, we had two of these projects this year, company-wide, so one of our other airports was also bidding one out, and we, similarly, on that one, we actually pulled it from bidding, we decided not to bid it out this year. We're kind of keeping an eye on steel pricing, for one, that's, that has not plateaued yet, that's the market information we're seeing that's continuing to go, and that's really the feedback we got from the contractors was, unfortunately, the nature of these types of contracts is they have to honor their bid pricing for a certain period of time. We can shorten that up as much as we can, but typically that's, you know, 30 days is a bare minimum, 60 days is, 60 or 90 days is more realistic, and with prices the way they are. are on those commodities, um, they're just, the bidders just can't absorb that risk, and I certainly understand that. So we will keep an eye on that market and stay in touch with the three bidders that were interested and, you know, just kind of do a qualitative feel for when the market's starting to, um, come around. At the earliest, I would say, towards the tail end of this calendar year, you know, the fiscal year for the FAA starts on October 1st, but earlier, they're ready to start spending money until this timeframe of the year. Uh, so we will probably put that out right after the 1st of the calendar year would be my, my best guess at this point.
Okay. Anyone else, any comments for Chris? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item H, Airport Manager's Report. Tim?
Okay. Oh, thank you, Chris, that was a good report. Uh, real short, um, I have, I've attached to the board packet, uh, some of the just general activities of the airport. Uh, this, in April, we had, uh, 100, 1,490 arrivals, 2,085 departures. The reasons they're different, arrivals and departures, is because when they practice touch and goes, they just count them, uh, as the departures, so it kind of shows more activity. I also put on your packet, uh, some drawings of the airport. What's, what's happened in the last couple of years is the fire department has required us to, uh, re-identify all the hangars in a more reasonable fashion so that the fire department could locate a hangar, um, in a, in a reasonable time. Unfortunately, nobody in the airport recognizes that those are the new hangar designations. They still call, call themselves by their old hangar numbers. And so I took on a task to go ahead and match up all the, uh, existing, um, old hangar numbers to the new fire, fire department, their required numbers, and did them on a map and have a, have a spreadsheet that, that, uh, anybody can now sit, sit in there and actually determine where to go. We actually had the sheriff come in today looking for a complainant at hangar number 40. Well, the only way we could find hangar number 40 is go to this, is this chart and match it up and determine who was there and what it was. So it's something that was long overdue, and I'm glad we finally got it posted. I shared it with the fire department. That worked out well. I also have a volunteer, uh, her name is Sandy Getz, who's assisting me in updating all the information of who and what are in all the hangars, what aircraft, and who is, who is operating those aircraft throughout the whole airport. Uh, this is not an inspection mandate, this is strictly just a fact-finding mission right now. We're just going through and calling all of the leaseholders and asking them to verify who is renting from them, and what, and we're calling the people that are in those hangars and asking them what airplanes they have in there. Uh, that way we can update all of our, all of our database and make sure that everything is current and, uh, those planes are properly registered with, uh, the state and every other requirement associated with keeping an airplane, um, in the airport. The new gate card system has been fairly successful. We have 517 active users on the files. Uh, we are still having some intermittent gate failures over by Michael's, uh, FBO. We've got the vendor out there, uh, looking to order some new parts, trying to mitigate that, but I think overall it's going to be fine. I postponed the published airport open house that was scheduled for sometime in June. It's been on the, on the website for most of the year. We just didn't know what and when early enough. Now that there's a possibility that we could do it, I was going to actually kind of pull the airport patrons and see if they have an appetite for it later in the year, and if they do, I would form a, a volunteer committee to help put this together. So we'll just see how that plays out in the next, uh, month or so. Lastly, I want to thank John Rogers for taking on all the payables and receivables tasks, and to Paul Hamilton for taking on the operational and safety issues and concerns at the airport. As Airport Manager, I'm trying to prioritize what I can do best to manage, uh, take care of all the obligations to the FAA and to safety and to, um, our, all of our patrons, and I can just sit back, and if it has to do with the money, John is stepping up and doing it. If it has to do with the operational issues, Paul steps up and does them. It's been fabulous. There's, there's, there's never a no. It's just been really a fabulous partnership that we're having together. Today was a great example. Paul mentioned we had an aircraft that had a minor, uh, minor, a minor, um, incident today, and, uh, boy, we rallied up that, that team in about a minute, in 15 minutes. We had a team, Paul was out there, I was out there, our airport, our airport maintenance manager was out there, and we took care of it with, uh, Jess Harmon and a few other volunteers. It was just nice to see people all working together. The part that I was very impressed with was Rick Lee, our maintenance manager, went out and immediately got on his computer and did the required FAA NOTAM announcement to keep us completely in, um, within all of our obligations. He then went to our AWAS recording, put an AWAS notice that the airport, the air, the, uh, runway will be closed, and within 40 minutes, he was back, took off the NOTAM, took off the announcement. It was just like clockwork. So all the practice and training we've been doing has paid off, so I'm very, very grateful for all of the support that, uh, we're all getting, actually. We're all getting that for, from our, from our team. So with that, uh, that's it.
Tim, if, um, on the, on the note of the, uh, the good fluidity around the NOTAM posting, it kind of reminded me to mention, as soon as we do have, um, per Chris's report with the fog sealing, that parameters for that time dialed in, getting it out on the NOTAMS is awfully helpful because that feeds right into people's foreflight. So if they're planning for a flight in here on the 3rd, it'll just jump up with the red box saying, no.
Carl, it's funny you said that, because I just put, when Chris mentioned that, I just put a calendar invite for Rick Lee and just, so we both have in our calendars that it starts on that date and could go for three days, so we're, we're going to have a meeting ahead of time.
Thank you, Carl. Yeah, John?
So Tim, not to be, not to be a, uh, Debbie Downer in any way, but, um, I, I mean, that, that responsiveness, um, it's incumbent on us, just to keep in the back of our mind, when we hire our new manager, we don't want to lose that, right? We don't want it to have to be, that be because of something special that you know or do that we can't pass along to, uh, to the, the new manager. We want that, we want to, you know, put that in procedures, as you know, and make it so that that, it's possible for us to continue that exceptional performance going forward.
Fully agreed, yeah. My biggest task is going to quite honestly be, now that I've learned a lot of the position requirements, is to come up with a, uh, an effective, um, training package for the next person so we can, over a period of time, become experts.
Well, in the meanwhile, you're not doing a great job of getting out of this job.
Well.
Okay, we don't have a legal counsel's report this evening, obviously. John, did you want to take up any more of our time, or you want to give us your report?
Just, I should, I should mention that, um, our performance relative to budget gets strong, is keep, is getting stronger and stronger because we're getting volunteer labor to do our highest labor cost item. That, that should continue through the end of the year, but hopefully not much longer than the end of the year.
It won't.
Thank you, John. Okay. Uh, anything from any of our Airport Authority members that we didn't discuss this evening?
Maybe just, oh, sorry, pause, I was going to say a quick question. Any updates on the search?
Uh, Tim and I just discussed this, this morning. I don't think any of us have any updates, um, different than what you last received. So.
Yeah, just, I'll just, I'll just, just, just a little bit more, not much more. Bradley sent us a note that there were four, what he considered to be four finalists in the, the 10 or 12 that he received. He shared, uh, three of the resumes, somehow he missed one of them with us. He wants to get with us next week to start lining up those initial screening interviews, and that's where we're at, at this point.
Clearly where Carl's at is, uh, needing to go to that Fly Carson City, uh, email account. Which, thank you, uh, to Tim, and one of his other great, uh, gestures was hooking me up with some people who actually were able to get me access to it, so.
You're getting them now, I can send it to one email now, huh?
Yeah, it's, that Fly Carson City account is not easy to navigate, as you've probably well learned.
Next step is getting it hooked into my Outlook so I actually see it naturally.
Yeah.
Paul, you, uh, had one.
I just, I just wanted to say that we've got a number of, uh, big FAA projects planned, but I think, I haven't heard anything in a while about what the, what our next big FAA goal project is. So I think maybe we ought to start thinking about that and working on that, that, those, those thoughts, whether it's a, maybe a terminal building, maybe a runway extension, maybe something. What, what's our next big hurdle we want to go after? So we ought to all think about that.
Forward-thinking, proactive. Yep. Agreed.
Paul, one thing that, uh, we touched on a while back was, we, we went ahead and teamed up with the city, with the Board of Supervisors, and put in for that, uh, infrastructure grant.
CDS grant.
A CDS grant. And we also found some potential partners from the investment community to come in and possibly take care of that whole front of our airport and do a fabulous job if we get lucky and things fall in place. But isn't that the reason we're kind of putting off the landscaping right now is because we may have an opportunity to jump onto a fabulous co, or a co-op agreement between the federal government and then private investor and the Airport Authority? So that would be fabulous, but we can't count on it. We're just waiting to see what happens.
Yeah, we, we have submitted, and I've, I've been the one who's written the requests. We've submitted multiple grant requests, three that I can think of off the top of my head. We just haven't heard back from any, so. But that's not surprising in the world of grant funding. Everybody else is competing for those dollars, so.
And I, I mean, of course, I'm very interested in making sure we push forward the nighttime instrument approach project as quickly as possible. We have our, you know, we have our neck, we have our next, you know, our, our project for next year in line, but if that comes out the way we hope it does, that'll be our, that'll be a project we're going to want to focus on heavily, in my opinion.
Okay. I trust we don't have any public comment? Anyone on the line?
We have no public comment from callers at this time.
Okay, fantastic. One agenda item I'll bring to everybody's attention, uh, for the June meeting, I don't know what we're going to have for the June meeting, but one thing that is a calendar item is election of officers. So that'll be on our, our June meeting agenda for certain. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.